It being five o'clock, I will call the Monday, October seventh, twenty nineteen, meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen to order. Is anyone filming?
Free cam.
Free cam, anyone else? Alright, the first item is going to be the approval of chapter ninety for South Hillside Street milling and repaving. And the sum was thirty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Um, motion made.
Motion made, motion seconded, all in favor, aye.
Ballot amount thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. I was supposed to give these to you guys to sign? Okay, we'll take care of that.
Should I look down? Oh, I look up and you're there.
I know. Alright. Item number two is the use of parcel two thirty-nine dash zero thirty-one owned by the town of Free Town outside the boundaries of the Free Town Elementary School lease. What this is, is we hope to have a person or company come in and construct the communications tower for the new police station. And they would do that on the property. And we would then sign a lease with them. They would lease the tower from us to use for oh, cellular phone and like antennas.
For the school, will it lease it to us?
No. What actually happened back in nineteen forty-six when they purchased the land, all the land. The, the town meeting at that time purchased it in for school purposes. That meant that the school, the Free Town School Committee had control over all the land. Since that time, the Free Town School Committee has gone defunct. And it now will revert to the town. But we have to, um, oh, declare it excess property for school purposes. The school, um, will, land will keep within the bounds that we, um, had cert- well, surveyed.
It was a survey done by, um, a surveyor to determine specifically the area as part of the lease that the school would have, you know, care and control over. Allowing all the other buildings and, uh, in the parcel to be outside of that area that the school's in.
So.
That's incorporated into the lease by reference.
Right. And so actually, probably in the past, when we built the present police station, when we built this building, we, the, the board, we, parentheses, uh, probably should have gotten, uh, permission from the school committee. They didn't. They did get permission for, um, for what is now the ball fields and so forth. So what we're going to do now, right David, is we're going to be voting on declaring that the five acres that the Free Town, new Free Town Police Station is on is excess property. Alright.
That, yeah, I don't know if that is specifically what council is.
I believe that's. Well, well, actually, probably for, uh, good record keeping and so forth, we should probably have the motion as being all property outside the bounds.
Yeah, that would be the cleaner way of doing it. That's out of the description included in the Free Town Elementary School lease.
Okay, so can we have a motion for that?
A little confused to tell you the truth.
Alright. What, what we want to do is take all the land that is not presently within the surveyed bounds of the Free Town Elementary School, declare that as excess land for school purposes. And then we can.
Everything else is.
Everything else can be used for whatever purposes.
Town purposes.
We decide.
So basically, just so that I really understand this, does, does the school owns the property now? Or it's under their jurisdiction?
No, it's under their jurisdiction. We own, we own, we own Free Town Elementary School. We are leasing it to the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District. As, that was part of the agreement that we, uh, made when we went into full regionalization.
So Free Town land is being leased to the district.
And it's, it's defined in a plan that was incorporated in reference in the lease agreement.
So now we're pulling some of that back, is that?
Right. Ba- basically, everything that is not within the bounds of the Free Town Elementary School would revert back to being just basically town land.
Okay. Alright, motion to accept.
Okay, motion made, so seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, complex, uh, situation, but. Number, uh, three.
Number three is, um, it's, uh, just recently I met with Maureen Candido, who is the town administrator in the town of Lakeville. And, uh, we had a discussion about, um, jointly filing an application for a document management system, uh, for a grant application, uh, through the co- co- um, Community Compact Program. And, uh, the, the two towns would like to, um, propose and hopefully get a grant in the amount of, uh, actually seventy thousand dollars each for each town as well as eight thousand dollars for a scanner. Uh, the purpose of which will, will, the initially, uh, a, a company will come in and scan all of our documents into, in PDFs, and then upload those documents into the cloud and as well as other locations, so there's redundancy. And then we have, you know, we have the option at that point if they're a critical public record, we're obviously not going to destroy them. But if they're an ancillary kind of record that can be destroyed in accordance with the Secretary of State's schedule for the destruction of public records, uh, we can destroy them after a certain period of time. It's up basically up to the, the individual departments. We talked about, you know, all of the department, um, the inspectional services permits, ZBA, Conservation Planning Board. Uh, I also, uh, I know of some interest on the part of the police department to have some of their records, but I haven't, I didn't have a chance to talk to Carlton before, uh, uh, the meeting. Uh, but I did talk to the town clerk as well as, uh, Kim Fails, who are accountant, who, uh, had coordinated, um, the, uh, creation of the storage area in the old schoolhouse as well as putting, uh, hiring company to organize those files and put them in the schoolhouse. So the purpose of the grant, like I said, will be to scan all these documents in and, uh, create permanent records online. It'll be searchable, uh, allow us to produce reports out of it. Um, once again, it's going to be a grant, so the upfront cost if we get it will be zero. The application is due October fifteenth, which is really close. Uh, however, we didn't really, I didn't, I, I, I initially met with, um, Maureen last Wednesday, and we've been talking about it since, and we had a joint meeting, uh, with her building inspector, our building inspector, their IT person. And, uh, there is definitely an interest in regional grants are scored higher, so we thought this would be a good uh, IT application grant that, uh, the two towns could participate in. Um, we are looking to have SERPED, uh, put together the application for us. Um, we have twenty hours each that are allocated each year, uh, by SERPED is like community service hours where we can task, uh, SERPED with, uh, different types of studies as well as preparing grant applications. We don't know how many of those twenty hours each community is going to need to put together the application, but SERPED has expressed an interest in participating and being part of, uh, of preparing the grant application. And, um, the other thing is, worst case scenario, uh, Maureen and I would each take a day and, you know, complete the application. It's not, you know, so comprehensive that it couldn't be done in a couple of days. So I'm just making the board aware that this is something, uh, that I'm interested in following up on, and I think it's a good project. And looking for the board to just basically vote to support the application.
Any questions, George?
No, I make a motion to accept it.
Okay, um, I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, do we want to sidestep that, David?
Uh, actually, uh, we did have a meeting this morning, uh, with the Insurance Advisory Committee and the consultant. Uh, as a result of that meeting, the Insurance Advisory Committee, uh, has, uh, basically tabled hiring a consultant until, until such time, uh, that, uh, we, uh, meet with our current insurer, which is Maya. Um, and, uh, as a result, you know, we may not be moving forward with the, the consultant. Their recommendation was that, at this point, uh, they want to meet with Maya, they want to talk about the rights and the programs and the plans that they offer and, and see, they, you know, basically see if they can sharpen their pencils and do something for us.
Who's on that committee, David?
Uh, there's a union representative, there's Kevin, um, Walter, who's a former police officer, Mark, who is a current police officer, uh, Lisa, uh, Jess is on it, I'm trying to think who else was there. There's one other person. But basically, like I said, we had a two-hour meeting with the consultant. He basically framed out, you know, what the benefits would be of moving forward with putting it out to bid. The general feeling is that maybe we should talk to the current insurer to see if there's something that can be done without putting it out to bid.
So, we have to vote on this?
At this point, it's tabled now.
Tabled, okay.
Pass over that. Um, item number five.
Uh, um, the, the situation there was, um, I had hoped, I know that there was some discussion at the last meeting, uh, regarding the property insurance, property casualty insurance. Um, the concern was, uh, that, uh, whether we should put that out to bid, um, and whether the coverage would follow, uh, current, uh, the current situation regarding outstanding legal issues that we have. And, um, at this point, it would be, I, I was hoping I was going to be able to talk to the person I've been talking to for the consulting services and ask if I could get a price on a scaled-back version of the consultant services, not to include a bid, but basically to, you know, lend, uh, his expertise to looking at our existing policies to make sure, number one, that there are no gaps in coverage. Uh, number two, to make sure that we have all the coverages that we need and, and the limits that we need so that we don't get any surprises should we have a catastrophic loss. And basically to give recommendations on any other potential insurances that, uh, the town, uh, might require uh, to conduct its operations and business. So at this point, what I'll do is I'll, uh, hopefully within the next week or two, uh, talk to the consultant and see what a, a proposal of a scaled-back scope would be and, uh, bring it to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, I just have one question, David. Um, if we were to do the scale back, um, review, just a review and add a bid, uh, subsequently, if we were to go out, if we were to act via a bid, would that be still within the original, um, parameters of what you had spoken about, or would it become more expensive, I guess?
It would be more expensive. He gave us a price of seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, and that would include, you know, getting all the materials ready to put the, it's, it's, understanding insurance, you need the expertise in that. I'm not an expert in that. I, um, I did actually work as an underwriter for a year and a half when I first got out of college about forty years ago and, and.
Things have changed.
Insurance has changed and it's more complex, and I feel, I would feel more comfortable that somebody who's an expertise in that field take a look at all of that and, uh, you know, have an honest assessment of, of whether we have adequate coverages to cover our exposure. So, uh, we do, to ha- scale that back just to go through the policies, I, I would, uh, suspect that that's going to be, you know, somewhat less than the original proposal that, you know. The other thing I, I did want to point out that another community close to us did put it out to bid. And, uh, on the workers' comp alone, uh, and this is a classic case of it, uh, all of the, they're, they had their own school system in the other community, so they had, you know, a substantial number of employees. Uh, when they went in and did, uh, uh, when the consultant did a, a review, it's the same consultant, uh, of, uh, the workers' comp, everything in workers' comp is based on classifications, job classifications. Certain classifications are less expensive on a payroll basis than other classifications, like ten cents on a, an office worker where it might be a dollar and a half on a DPW or highway worker uh, because of the level of, of, uh, hazard involved in each of those positions. In the other community, they saved eighty thousand dollars. So, you know, to put some of this, you know, that might, you might want to selectively put certain things out to bid, and maybe as part of that review, at least have the classifications looked at so that we're making sure that everybody who's working for us in terms of the payroll and the classification, that be, they're being assigned by the insurance, uh, company is the correct one.
Aye. This is my, uh, feeling on it. The, the cost of this would be up to seventy-five hundred dollars. Okay, not necessarily that it would be, but, well, we'll use that as, as a parameter. And just on, um, if you say eighty thousand dollars, knowing what that community was, knowing the relation to, uh, the rest of the town, even if you got one quarter of what they got.
Yeah, it's a good return on the investment.
Right. So I'm wondering if it wouldn't be, uh, in our best interest to go with what David had planned instead of just a, a simple review?
Your, um, insurance board, do, do they address this?
No, the, the Insurance Advisory Committee is strictly for health.
For health insurance, okay.
Everything else is, you know, the, we have property casualties, we have inland marine coverages, we have auto, we have workers' comp, we have, uh, IOD insurance, we have all kinds of insurances, which, like I said, you know, having an expert take a look at them versus, you know, somebody who isn't an expert, and, you know, we get the, the proposals and we accept them on the face that they're correct and, and having somebody really go through them with a fine-toothed comb and make sure that we're getting the coverages that we're paying for and making sure there's no gaps in the coverages, so we don't get any surprises down the road.
How many pol- how many policies are we talking about?
I would say property casualty, um, what Joe, it's called casualty general liability, uh, workers' comp and, uh, IOD injured on duty coverage, um, auto insurance, um, I'm sure there are a few others. Yeah, well, general liability is property casualty.
And that's, that'll be seventy-five hundred dollars?
Yes. That's what, he was going to prepare the bid documents. When, if we're not doing the bid, then it would be, you know, I don't know what that number will be, but I know it'll be less than seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it might be best to do the bid, you know, if we, if we come up and we find, okay, we, we need, change things, and now we're going to go and ask the, for a bid document, is that going to be more?
No, if it was up to seventy-five, it would be inclusive.
But I, I'm just, I'm just wondering if it's, I, I just think that this might be a, a good way to lump everything and go do it. It's not a bad investment, I don't think.
Okay, make a motion to, uh, move ahead with this.
I'll second the motion. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, number seven, um, the monthly ambulance abatements and write-offs. And we have contractual allowances for the month of September in the sum of eighty-two thousand sixty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. And write-offs for the month, month of September, uh, in the sum of twenty-seven thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents for a, uh, total of a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Do I hear a motion?
Move, uh, move to accept.
Motion made, motion seconded, all in favor, aye.
Alright, I have a question on that. Why do we vote on this all the time? I mean, this is, this routine.
Yeah, um, probably, maybe I'll, I'll go back and ask, uh, Gary if there's any, um, way around it. I do not think there is. I think it's a bookkeeping, um, I, I realize that, yes.
It's a contractual plan that we've agreed to do and.
Right. I, I think it's mostly, it's, uh, a bookkeeping, um, actions. It's, um, sent to us by, uh, Kim, so.
Oh, Kim's, alright, that's probably, okay.
Alright, um, I know it's. Item number, uh, seven is a second reading of the, um, meeting room policy for the, uh, new police station meeting room.
Have you read it? You've read it?
Yes.
We don't need to discuss it, right? It's pretty straightforward?
Exactly.
Okay, so make a motion to accept it.
Actually, we'll have one more reading. We, we adopted a pol- I don't know if we adopted a policy. We, by default, uh, have, uh, practiced, uh, having three readings of every policy before it's adopted formally. So we'll have it on the agenda one more time, and, you know, you know, anybody at that point, uh, if they have an objection or change to it.
So what are we doing today, then?
We're, we're doing the second reading of it.
So we have to vote on the second reading?
We both agree.
Yeah, you don't, yeah, you don't have to vote. It's just acknowledging the fact that we've had the first reading, we've had the second. It's sort of like a parliamentary process. And then the third reading is when, if you have changes, i- if it's a, if it's a dynamic document and there's a lot of changes, the changes would be made between the first reading and the second reading, second reading to the third reading. The third reading hopefully would be the final, uh, document that would be adopted by the board.
Okay, so we do not have to vote on it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, request for proposals for communications tower on the, on the site of the new, uh, Free Town Police Station. And as we, um, spoke of just a few minutes ago, um, this is, um, the, we, we found, we, we have this, uh, opportunity to get a gift. And, correct me if I say anything wrong here, Dave, but this, they're saying that because of the, the fact that this gift can be so valuable, that under, uh, bidding laws, we should, we should, um, extend a, uh, request for proposals so that someone else, if they wish to do the same thing as the company that we have, uh, been approached, uh, by, with a, a better value, that we accept that. So basically, this is just the.
The RFP is basically to lease the land that the, the, it, it's never been quote-unquote a donation or a gift, but the, it's been a proposal to put a tower, uh, on, uh, the, uh, police station's site with the understanding that that vendor would be allowed to put additional, uh, communications tower, uh, communications, I don't know what you call it.
Antennas.
Cell, for cell communication.
Yeah, cellular, yeah, they, and that's where they would get the money recouped for the value of.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but basically they're putting up a cell tower that they use and we can put our stuff in there.
Yes, exactly. Putting up a tower of sufficient size to.
Instead of we paying two-hundred-and-sixty, I think it is, to put up a.
And at the end of the lease?
At the end of the lease, it becomes ours.
Okay.
There's, there are three, uh, the, the RFP is when, um, we, uh, Palm Roy Associates, who, uh, is our, uh, owner's, project manager, OPM, uh, Taylor McDonald has developed an RFP to allow us to, um, uh, put that out to bid for lease, uh, to potent- potentially other vendors, but, uh, there are three issues that need to be addressed before we can do that, and the, it's been advertised in the central register as of Wednesday. We need to have the RFP finalized. So I have three things I need the board to address. One is, uh, the lease term, and there's been some discussion about that. Council is recommending that we adopt a five-year lease with three five-year options for a total of twenty years. That's the first thing. The second is we have to establish a minimum lease value on the, the, uh, value of the land to us to lease out to the vendor. And, uh, at present, uh, the, the suggestion has been made that a thousand dollars would be appropriate, uh, that the vendor would then pay to the town in addition to allowing us to use the, um, the, the tower for other, for the police purposes.
What is the comp, when cell towers go up, they always pay a lease to someone. What is the standard rate? Do you have any idea on that?
I know in other towns that I've been in, you can get as high, anywhere from thirty to sixty thousand dollars to put a, a cell tower annually on, uh, somebody's individual property.
So the prop- that's what the property owner gets?
Yeah, for leasing the land and allowing them to put the tower.
So, does that make sense for us to give it away?
Well, no, they, they're putting the tower up, which is.
I mean, that's what they do. They put the tower up.
Right, but.
I mean, if, if this were just a straight business transaction and we owned the property, they would pay us to put the tower up, correct?
Yeah, but that, it's sort of, it's reversed to what.
How?
Because we, we, we are going to allow them to put their tower on our property for a small sum. They're going to erect the tower.
Right.
Um, they're going to allow us to put our equipment on that tower.
And they're going to pay us a thousand dollars a month?
Oh, that, that was my question. They're paying a thousand dollars a month to us for the length of the lease.
Yep.
And my question then was, what is the normal amount that they normally pay to put up a tower like that on any other property? Is that comparable to what?
Well, once again, if, if you're a private landowner and you have a piece of land that's of value to a communication carrier, um, they'll, you know, they'll say, hey, they'll approach you as an individual and they'll say, alright, uh, you know, we'll put up the tower, we'll give you thirty thousand dollars a year to allow us to lease the land.
Well, that's, that's the amount that I, I would like to know.
Yeah, I don't know that specifically, though.
Well, that's a question, that's the question.
And, and we're too far down the road to actually be thinking at this point to, to, to.
Why?
Well, the RFP has to be done by, by Wednesday, so if we're moving forward with this, we have put up the.
Okay, I, I don't know if, is your, is your question just on the, the land site or on, uh, the ex- the extension? The, the other issue in where we would get additional benefit, if I'm not mistaken, is as they put, as this person contracts with different, uh, cell carriers to put up antennas, the amount of revenue that we would get would be additional, okay? So, he is putting this tower, or this firm is proposing that he, we put this, he constructs this tower. We get to put our equipment on it. Subsequent to that, when he gets carriers to put their antennas on, he makes more money from them. We also make more money, uh, from the tower.
Make more money at that point?
Yes.
So we get a.
So every time a, a new antenna goes on the, um, the tower, we would get additional revenue. Besides.
The thousand dollars.
Besides the thousand dollars.
I would like to see the numbers before I vote on this. I really would.
Well, um, well, George.
Actually, the, to be honest with you, you have the option not to accept it. There's, there's always a, a condition in the RFP that the town has the right to refuse or reject any bid proposals. So, we're, like I said, we're, we're like way down the road on this. If we don't get it done by Wednesday, we're going to be pushing it out into the, into the winter and, and if, 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 if we, we, we should probably move forward with it with the understanding that we can explore other options.
Down the way if we agree to do it, I mean, if we sign an agreement, we're bound.
If you don't think it's fair, then you say, all right, we're gonna exercise our option not to accept the bid. And that we're gonna, you know, look at other options. There's always that proviso in every RFP. That the town has the right to refuse or reject any proposal for any reason.
Are we not voting to accept us?
Yeah, but, okay, George, one of the things that I, I think you've missed is that they are going to construct the tower for free. That's going to save us two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in construction costs.
That's questionable because.
No, 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 it's not questionable, George. That's what they, that's the cost of building the tower.
Their tower?
No, no, no. That's the cost of us building our own communication tower, okay? What we're, we're, what they're doing is they're saying they will build the tower for us. We, we don't have. So where we are not, we do not have the expense of building our own tower. Subsequently, they're going to pay us for the lease of the land.
But I still, I, I don't see the numbers for us to.
We don't have the numbers. Well, that's why you're going out to bid. You, you're proposing.
We're going out to bid to who?
We're going out to bid.
For a vendor to come in and put up a tower and then.
For the construction of the tower?
To, to provide us.
I thought we would, this was for a contract with a company that. This is not clear. We, we, somebody's gonna put up a tower.
Yes. Through the bid process, we're leasing the land to a company. We, we don't know who that company is. We may only get one bid or we may get five bids. They're gonna propose to, to, to put the tower up.
So we, we're only voting to go out through an RFP?
RFP, exactly, yes.
Okay, all right, that's okay.
In, in the RFP, there's a proviso that if it's, if the conditions don't end up being favorable to us.
No, i- if this is just for an RFP, that's fine, because then we can look at the RFPs and go from there.
All right, so I have to put a number in to, for the thousand dollars per month. If you want.
If this is going off on RFP, why, why are we putting a number in?
The only other way you could do is you could put a minimum, a, any, uh, like a minimum, council advises us not to do that. Because they could come in and say it's a dollar, five, ten dollars a year. We're tying them into at least twelve thousand dollars a year. That's the logic behind it. You have to put in a lea- a lease amount as part of the RFP.
Are we asking multiple companies to come in and do this?
This is what we're doing. That's the ar- whole purpose of the RFP. We're gonna.
Just bear with me because I just don't understand this process.
Who's gonna give us the best price in terms of.
Why are we putting a number in there now if we're asking for a price? We're asking them to bid on this job.
I, I don't, I don't know how to explain it to you. I, I, like I said, we, uh, part of the RFP is we're stipulating that we're gonna get X amount of dollars. As an, as the amount that we're leasing the land. It's le- it's a very small piece of land that the tower is gonna sit on. It's gonna, it's smaller than the house.
So what are they bidding on? What exactly are?
They're bidding to lease the land.
Okay.
Which we're gonna put the tower on.
Okay.
And so they're gonna lease the land, they're gonna put the tower up.
Which is, doesn't cost the town anything.
Which doesn't cost the town anything, which is a, a value of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars if I'm. Okay, subsequent to that, after they build the tower, they, we put our own. Radio antennas on that tower.
Okay.
And we can now use it.
We can now use it. Exactly.
And then at the end of the twenty years, they basically transferred over to us for free.
Right, then subsequently, if they contact through their own business operations. Carriers who are, are willing, are willing to place their antennas on this tower. They and we get a benefit from the lease, okay? Um, I believe he had placed uh a value of around thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, uh, extra beyond the thousand dollars a year that we would get, okay? So, what we're doing is we're allowing them to build their tower. They're allowing us to put our equipment on there for free. And then when every lease that they get, we get a, uh, a, a value from that lease.
And for every outside antenna that goes on there, we get a portion of that?
Right, we, we would get.
And this is just the RFP, once again, you don't have to.
That's, that's not the.
The town says this is not in our best interest, the deal isn't good. We're gonna scrap the whole thing, we're gonna build our own tower, we're gonna spend the two hundred seventy, sixty-five thousand dollars. That's inappropriate, it's too towny. We could do, we could build it ourselves, there's no question.
Ask you this.
Where, it's a cost saving.
All we're voting on tonight is for it to go on an RFP.
Yes.
We're not accepting anything.
No.
Okay, so, all right, I'll make a motion that we accept.
There's one more step, one more step, one more step. Uh, the third thing that needs to be addressed is we have to confirm. With our insurance agent that the insurances are adequate to protect our interests. Um, with the construction of the tower. So as part of the RFP, we're gonna have certain re- insurance requirements. We don't have those numbers, that, we have numbers that have been suggested to us as uh. The proper limits for that, but we wanna check with the insurance agent to make sure that those limits are correct. To cover any exposure to the town resulting from the construction of the tower on our property.
Shouldn't the construction?
They're gonna pay.
They should be paying for all that.
They're gonna, yeah, we're, this is the requirement they're gonna have as part of the package, the leases. That they gotta have, for example, five million, uh, one million dollar uh property insurance or, or general liability. Five million dollar umbrella. I don't know what those parameters are gonna be. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, we sent it out today to the insurance company, we're gonna turn it around in a day. If I have those numbers by the time Wednesday morning rolls around, we'll incorporate them into the RFP. If I don't have them, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna then send out an addenda to the RFP stating. That every bidder is going to have to comply with these insurance requirements. I just wanna make sure that the board is aware that I'm doing that, so there's.
But just to be perfectly clear, all we're voting on tonight is to go out on an RFP.
Yes, and, but these three components, so these are the three missing pieces. That council and our owner, owner's project manager was saying, these are the three pieces we need the town to decide on. And those are the three components that they, and I just wanna make sure that everybody here understands, this is, you know, where. This, these are the things that we're putting into that document, so that everybody's on the same page and that we're, you know. Nothing, there's no surprises here down the road of somebody coming back and saying, geez, why did you do that? Or why did you put twenty years in straight lease versus the five years with the three-year, three, five-year options? So if you, uh, they need a motion just accepting those three components. With the proviso that if something should change in between now and Wednesday morning, that I have the authority to make those changes. You know, that, you know, something like the insurances of what's in the prop- in the.
Again, just changing the RFP.
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion.
On the advice of council, because council, I'm, I'm not gonna do anything, change anything without clearing it to council.
Okay, so the motion is to go out with an RFP, is that correct?
Yes.
With those three changes.
Three, three changes.
All right.
Okay, make that motion. I'll second that motion. All in favor, aye. Number nine is administrator's report, do you have?
Oh, uh, uh, actually, I only have one thing. Um, we did uh get in uh late in September, uh, a change order. On the police station building involving uh three components. Swale open and close of the wall drilling operation, additional excavation for the outside contract of an amount of fifty-two. Uh, five thousand two hundred thirty dollars, seventy-three cents. Uh, a CPVC chemical drain pipe change in the pipe from cast iron to fusile pipe. Three thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Uh, a detention door change, replace sliding doors in cell passages with hinge doors. Two thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and extend general conditions of uh weather. Uh, conditions that have, that have impacted the schedule and the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-three dollars. In total of uh thirty-six thousand, um, eighty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Uh, it's been, this has been approved by the uh project manager, by the architect, by the co- the contractor. Now, I need authorization to sign it and the, it's been approved by the building committee. Um, it wasn't on the agenda, I, I, it just inadvertently uh didn't put it on and it's really kind of important. So it's an unforeseen item, so I'd like the board to authorize me to sign this document. And uh forward it on to uh the general contractor.
Can I see that?
Sure.
The building committee did review that at their meeting and prove it, so.
Twenty-nine thousand for weather conditions, what is that?
What has happened, when they started out in April, they had a whole lot of rain. Um, and they feel that they are all behind. They had to do more work. Actually, um, a lot of it has to do with uh having people on site. At times when they basically, they couldn't work because of weather conditions. On that item, I, I know that they um have talked. Well, they, the project, the owner project manager and the general contractor's representative. Have uh talked on that and as the project goes on, if, they, actually, they're a little ahead of schedule. So if it remains that they're ahead of the schedule, that um item may be able to be removed.
Yeah, be accredited.
Giving it a credit, but.
I would, I would hold off on that, at least, uh, at least I'd like Lisa on this because she's up on what's going on, I'm not. So I, I, I'm not.
Well, it's been approved, Lisa actually had forwarded that on to me.
Well, I'd still like to hear what she had to say.
It's a bill, it's.
I, I, I don't know enough about it, so I don't wanna vote on it.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, it just seems a little bit over the top, that because of some weather delay, that thirty thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Item number eleven, um, town administrator.
Lisa said that if she, there was a question, she could come down, you want me to see if.
No, I just, I can't wait.
Well, the, it's, well, okay. It's prob- it might be a problem because of the, you know, the timeliness of the payment and.
I mean, it's a small amount compared to fourteen million or whatever, you know, so.
All right.
I just feel that's nickel and diming a project, you know. If somebody was building my house and they tried to tell me that, I wouldn't appreciate it, I can tell you that, but.
All right.
Um, item uh number eleven is discussion of uh town administrator's review. And I had forwarded a couple to the board. George has forwarded uh an example of evaluation sheet. My uh issue, I, I don't mind, I, I kinda like the um different categories. I'm not sure that I, I think there are, um, oh, let's see, eight here now, let's see. Yes, it's ten uh different categories. I'd kinda like to see us narrow it down, that's my, that's my opinion.
On the eval that I sent you?
Right, uh, I, um, I just would like to see us evaluate on like five, six items. Um, then we can pawn in on what we think is the most important now.
Well, I'd like, let's go through it now and just talk about, we have thirteen, thirteen eval issues here. Uh.
Well.
You wanna talk about?
Yeah, I, I just think that.
I don't, I honestly don't have a part of it, part of this, it's, you guys gotta decide then.
Uh, so, well, what I'm talking about, George, is the, the first is uh one through ten. Okay, and then the, the narrative, I don't have any issues with the narrative evaluation or like, say, twelve or thirteen at all.
Well, let's start with what you object to.
Well, okay, it's not that I object, it's, i- i- is, is, what I just would like us see. Um, is narrowing the, the number of items that we um. Or evaluate on.
Okay, so.
So.
Number one is pers- personal, number two is professional skills. Uh, relations with elected members of governing body, policy ex- execution, reporting. Citizen relations, staffing, supervision, fiscal management and community, those are the ten.
Right.
Uh, is there any you wanna take out?
Um, well. I, I guess I would like to, to have a little bit of time to, to see. Okay, yeah, and that, that's what, that, that and the other thing that I um am. Um, a little bit, I, I don't mind uh a numerical rate, but I don't think we should come up with. And say, okay, now that's a score.
So you're, you're talking about this.
Right, so I don't mind that we say, okay, I give, I rate at number, you know, whatever.
Well, you can just use the verbiage, you can get rid of the numbers if that's.
Right, okay, that might be, that might, that would be, I, I would, I, I would. Okay, all right, so, all right, then, then my, um, my only uh issue would be, let's see. Really thinking about what we can, you know, it's community, the rating for, or discussing community. And communication, general communication, we'll say.
Number is that?
Uh, well, it actually doesn't have a.
Number ten, community.
Okay, right.
What you're talking about?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So I, I know what you're, you're saying is how we feel he reacts to the community and.
Well, it's got the.
Right.
Uh, three paragraphs addressing that.
Uh-huh, so, I, I guess what I would like to see, if, if we can't condense it, uh, a little, uh, oh. Na- narrower in the number, but maybe a little bit broader in the scopes of what, how we, we refer to them. I, the, the, the general.
You know, I'm fine with making changes, uh, how do you wanna do the changes?
Well, I, I think I want a little time to, to really review them and see. And I, George, it might be that in the end, okay, I can't come up with reducing them, okay? And we go, go with the ten. Uh, it's just that, I think if we go with ten, it starts to get a little. Bit where, okay, you narrow in, maybe you review and give a, a good um narrative on one item. But you say, it's, this is getting a little old and, you know, when, when we get to nine and ten on the list. We're not as thorough as we really should be, that's.
Well, let's, let's decide, you know, there's ten categories, each category has a few questions. Uh, so it probably amounts to maybe fifty line items, which is, it's a lot. Maybe we can go through this and eliminate some, if, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, that might be.
And just, uh, we can pick a number like what's reasonable, twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
And uh, and then just find the top twenty or twenty-five that you want to use. And get rid of the others.
Yeah.
I mean, like, I'm, I'm looking at this one here, I'm just picking this, demonstrates a capacity for innovation and creativity. That's a tough one, I mean, if we decided that that was not realistic, we could scratch that off.
Right, that, that's exactly uh my idea. It's, it's not that I want. Right, that, that's exactly, uh-huh, my idea. It's, it's not that I wanna throw it out or.
Okay.
I just want, I think we could maybe condense things and.
Okay.
Where, you know, even more.
How do you wanna do this? Do you wanna do yours?
Well, what I would do is, if you don't mind, I, I like to, uh, oh, yeah, stew it alone.
Yeah.
So I, I have my, my ideas and then we can input it, uh, as a group and come up with the, with the, uh.
All right, so make, make your changes and then let's discuss it the next meeting when Lisa is here. There is no urgency for this, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, um, item number, uh, twelve is a letter of resignation from the, as an alternate, al- alternate member of the zoning board of appeals from James Saja.
Motion to accept.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor, aye. Okay, um, item number thirteen is, uh, change of status form for Jessica Thomas. Uh, Jessica, the treasure collector, as we both know, George, has passed her, um, certification and is now a certified, um, oh, um, uh, treasure collector by the Mass Municipal Treasures Association.
Just wanna make sure nobody misinterprets what you just said. You said somehow George passed, I think, whatever you said. It's Jessica passed her.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, but just, the way you phrased that was a little, little off.
All right.
Uh, so she did pass her, uh, exam. She's certified.
Right, and so she, uh, is, uh, eligible for her, uh, pay increase to sixty-two thousand dollars annually, uh, and.
In this spectrum.
Yes, and I would, uh, that we do that retroactive to July one.
Okay.
Okay.
Make the motion accept.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, the last item would be, uh, executive section in relation to Excel and we wouldn't have, we won't have a quarrel because I'm going to abstain, abstain. All right, so with, yes.
No public discussion, no discussion about the plot contracts, which was listed on the agenda?
Right, we, I had passed over it as, for, for our reasons, okay?
No public discussion?
Well, um, I, I think, I think I could, you know, I can take a breath, but what would be the public discussion, Mark?
I'm just asking if you're offering it to the public.
And what, I just said, what would be your?
That public discussion should be offered at this reasonable time.
What, what is your public discussion?
I have nothing to say, but I think the public was here.
All right, so we don't have any public discussion.
Okay, Tom.
Okay.
Simon.
All right. Okay, and like I say, I, public discussion, no public discussion? I'll accept the, uh, motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion made.
Oh, motion made, yes.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, aye.
Aye.